For which standards? One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, consent agenda items.
I would actually like to table the three minutes. I noticed a couple of small typos and rather than taking up, I talked to Mike and he thought it'd just be easier to make them and bring them back next meeting.
All right, maybe the second.
What kind of typos are they, just like misspellings or?
Uh, no, a couple contents or things that could be clarified differently.
I'll talk with Joy and we'll get those corrected and brought to the board at the August meeting.
Okay.
There are just some things as far as notes go that need to be clarified. I want to make sure everything is accurate.
I just said the A to C. Oh.
Um, can I get a second on?
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, uh, so we'll table those till the August meeting. New hires?
I'll make a motion to accept the new hires as presented.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Does that include the contracts? Are you just moving the, because that's under the, the reason I'm asking is I don't see years of service identified and if we end up adding policy for admin regarding years of service and how we've done on the others, we didn't identify them in the contracts.
We can go back and do that to later date, that's just a human resources thing. See, we don't have that in place for administrators right now anyway.
Right, but if it just said their years of service, it doesn't hurt it to be in a contract and if it doesn't kick into anything, it doesn't, but then they wouldn't have to sign a new contract.
We haven't included years of service in the administrative contracts. But that would be easy, um, with our internal candidate, we know, because he hasn't been here long and any other person who's new to the district, so.
Right, yeah, I know, we don't have anything in place now, I just didn't know, was it a problem to go back and amend it later?
It won't be.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, um, all those in favor of accepting the new hires as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Announcements? Any announcements? Okay, that's easy. All right, reports, acknowledgements by the board?
I just want to say, um, thank you to that school messenger app that we have now for the text messaging. I want all the families to know that you can be alerted via text. I think it's a great new tool for us to use, so I'm looking forward, I think it's a great addition to one that's been bringing it in.
Yeah, I'm hoping to use that, um, to kind of remind people about things that are coming up.
Yes.
Throughout the year, it's just another tool, you know, looking at the, uh, school perception survey, we know that, you know, people would like text messages, at least a portion of our population, so.
Yeah, I think that will help, because you know, with our communication too, we've been talking about that, um, some of the times it goes through the junk mail, I think everybody will read your texts, you know?
Right, right away, you know, in most cases too.
Right.
So, the, the key to that though is getting people signed up. We're allowed to send out like one mass text, you know, everybody that we have a phone number for.
Yes.
You know, telling them about it and asking them to sign up, but then it's really on them to do that. So, you know, we'll, we'll communicate in a, in a couple of different ways about the system.
Yeah, because I thought it was, you can sign up through registration, so it's great.
Yeah, we're hoping to get just about everybody.
Yeah.
Dan, I know you haven't told us everything about summer school yet, but, no, no, but I just wanted to say thank you for taking that on, I know that was a lot by yourself and, and, um, we haven't heard anything awful, so.
Good job, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, I attended the golf outing that the football program, um, put on and it was awesome, we had a lot of good, um, everything went well, it was well, nice and done.
I also wanted to acknowledge Morgan, the community outreach, uh, she's creating a lot of buzz in the community and she did a contest where, you know, if you invited so many people to the Willamette Community Outreach page, like, you know, she's giving away small little prizes and things like that. She's partnered with, um, some businesses already, she worked on a deal with, um, Hidden Grounds Cafe over by Greasy Hill, buy one get one if you show your Willamette ID. So, she's just hit the ground running and she's creating a lot of positive content, um, creating a lot of buzz in the community, so I just wanted to give her a shout out for that.
And I do have her scheduled to come to the August fifteenth work session to share about some of the great things that are happening within the community outreach program, so.
She's very visible, it's, it's great.
Well, I wanted to give the, um, shout out, pat on the back, whatever you want to call it, to Ms. Robbins and Mr. Mudge. We got an email that I shared with all the board members and Dr. Plur was on about how happy she was with, uh, how well-prepared her child was for taking the AP exams. So, um, thank you for the email and the feedback, uh, and good job by, especially the teachers.
I have a comment on that as well, uh, there's been a tradition here, when students score five on an AP test, they're presented with a yard sign from their teachers and that's something we're going to continue to do. And that'll happen on the morning of August eighth, so we've got, all, all the AP teachers, or most of the AP teachers are going to take a pay and they're going to go all around the entire district and present those signs, so. Should be thirty-some, I don't have the exact number, but, uh, thirty-some kids score fives and, um.
It's, it's very exciting, so. It's pretty awesome.
Well, we'll definitely get some pictures of that for social media too.
Great.
Thanks, anybody else? All right, leadership team?
Do you want to go first, Joe Bender?
Yep. Okay, Chuck, all right, uh, summer school's concluded and it was a success. Throughout summer school, students and staff provided positive feedback about the new calendar that you guys approved and the new classes, they were a hit. Also, a survey was given out to the teachers concerning the cellphone sleeves and their effectiveness, overall, the teachers said to continue this practice and it was very effective, so we will be implementing this in the fall schoolwide.
Awesome.
That is my report.
And that's another, that's another thing, you know, we're trying to act on the feedback that we got through our, uh, school perception survey, so. Looking forward to, you know, coming up with some clear concise protocols for that for the students, so they know how to handle the cellphones when they walk in the room and when they leave. So, excited about that.
I like seeing all the pictures on social media too of the different classes and with, especially the catchy name classes.
Yeah.
And just the different stuff they were cooking and.
Rookies cooking.
Rookies cooking, yeah, the names, the names were good, the stuff that you had posted was great, so that was cool to see.
I can't wait next year because I have word of mouth, so those classes will be even more full, so, looking forward to next year too, so.
Awesome.
How, how did the kids do academically, Dan?
They did great, I mean, they pass and they get their good grades and, you know, I think we had, you know, a couple of kids that just, you know, before the Fourth of July or something like that, they just, they may or may not show up or something like that and they're, but overall, everyone was there and, and the discipline issues were so minimal this year, so. Looking forward to the incoming class, they were, they were really solid, so, I think it's set the tone too. When they first got there, we kind of went over things and, in a nice way, in a positive way, but, you know, setting some guidelines and expectations, so, overall, it was awesome, great summer school.
Awesome.
Yeah, kudos to the teachers too for.
Oh, my God.
All my contributions to that as well.
And a lot of the teachers that had to come into sub, uh, I think you mentioned Jake Mudge, he was, he was in for PE all the time and, uh, Kirsten Fank was here all the time and Alicia Costa was here and, it's tough to get people to come into the summer. I mean, it was, you know, some people call in sick and they're like, oh my God, I hope to God this person says yes, and then they do, so it was really nice of them to step up to the plate, so, it's great.
All right, um, I want to start off also by complimenting the team who put on the golf outing. I, uh, played, I don't golf very often, it was only my second round this year, um, but I played, I had a great time. This was the second straight year, they were sold out, about a hundred and forty-four golfers or so, um, there was a waiting list. At this time, unless you know differently, our quarterback club is still verifying what the profits are, uh, from that, but I wanted to share that those profits are going to go toward the overnight team building. Uh, and football camp at Wisconsin Lutheran that the board approved a few months ago, um, replacement equipment such as the end zone camera and the sideline cart and then pregame meals for the players. The people who organize and ran the golf outing include Coach Square and Coach Hopkins, um, along with the quarterback club, Joy, Amy Richardson, I apologize if I say any of his names wrong, Eleka Wells, Jen Frisbee, Kim Christensen, Victoria Vedrosian, Patty Jastre, and Amanda Bath. Those are the names that, um, that I got, um, so, great event, looking forward to next year. Um, I wanted to also recognize our nurse, Vienna Jarnigo. She led an excellent training on first aid, CPR, and AED use last week, I attended along with thirteen other of our employees and there'll be two more trainings throughout the year, happens three times. Want to talk briefly about the new associate principal hires that you guys just approved. So, um, as far as the associate principal for curriculum and instruction goes, Don Norwick came, came out on top of a very deep candidate pool. That was probably the, the most applicants we've had for any position since, since I've come on board. Uh, Don, you may know, he's been teaching social studies for thirteen years, um, and here for the past year, so. Uh, he's been department chair in two other schools, got great leadership, uh, in curriculum knowledge, and he recently received his master's degree with his principal licensure. So, uh, what really kind of set him apart from some of the other great candidates is his strong understanding of standards-based learning, something that the district is, is, is working hard at, um, so I think he's really going to be able to support that work well over the next couple of years. And our new associate principal of people services is Katie Grunkel Sewell. Katie grew up in this area, she's a Central grad, um, but has been working in Colorado for the last ten years. So, she has twenty-three years of experience in special education, nineteen as a teacher, and then in the last four, she served as a special education five oh four coordinator in a really large district out there. Uh, so she, depending on the year, worked with anywhere from six to nine schools, doing a lot of the same things that she'll do in this role here, so I think her experience is going to, um, translate really well to what, you know, I'm going to ask her to do. So, um, she's applying for her Wisconsin licensure, if her certification doesn't transfer directly, I, I did a little digging, um, and will have to apply for a one-year provisional for her while she finishes the coursework, so. Sometimes they say you've got to take one class or something like that, but, um, but it won't be an issue. So, wanted to share that with you. Wanted to give you an advertising update from Herm, uh, he's on vacation this week, but he let me know that he met with the Daktronics people a couple of times now, and this is in regards to advertising to pay for the signs, you guys might remember that conversation. So, they, they sent him some renderings this week of their ideas of what the inside and outsides for boards could look like, um, and then they discussed packaging deals for advertisers, you know, so we can incorporate multiple, you know, sponsorships. And then how we can promote those businesses throughout the sports complex, um, in other words, what can we offer them for doing this? So, they're going to get back with it next week with some pricing options and then we'll develop the game plan from there, so, at a future working session meeting, Herm will come back and share with you guys, um, potential, um, options, and we can discuss it from there. Wanted to give you a vacancies update. Starting to get nervous with some of our open positions at this point in the summer, you know, we've got just a little over a month left. Now, we still have a special education teaching position that's unfilled, um, we need candidates for that. We have a science teaching position, it's biology and chemistry, which, you know, is a hard to fill field to begin with, but then to have both of those certifications is, is a little bit difficult. I'm hopeful we can find someone, uh, I did give a candidate a tour of the building today, so, you know, we'll see how that turns out. Uh, the German history position is still open, um, I've interviewed the only two German-speaking candidates that we have, neither is the right fit for this school. Our position is posted on weekends and, um, and I also recently posted it on the American Association of Teachers of German website. It's like the national organization for German teachers and we are the top, like, uh, what would you call it, like highlighted job, we're at the top of the page, so hopefully anybody that's going there, um, will take a look at our job first. I also shared the information with the, um, heads of the Wisconsin, Oregon, Illinois, Indiana chapters, um, because I figured they might be connected with people in a different way, um, so, so we'll see. I, I still think it's going to be pretty tough to find somebody for that position, so, um, we have started to look at some online options for students who would be taking German two, three, and four, because we want to be able to allow them to finish what they've started at this point. So, I, I don't have any, any, um, more specifics on that, but that's where that's at. Uh, we're looking to hire two para professionals and two more full-time substitute paras, uh, that's the position that the board approved, I want to say it was back in two thousand and twenty-one. There are in-house substitutes, so we probably have one on staff, we need, we really need to get two more. And then excited to share that, um, I was able to get CISA to drop their total for the speech pathology sub, um, to seventeen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, it sounds like a lot, but, but it is a savings of us. In the number of six thousand two hundred and forty dollars less than their original offer. And it was, came in right about the same as the two tele, teletherapist, um, companies that I met with, so, to have a person here, it was a no-brainer, so, you signed that contract today, so, that's a bit of a relief, our kids will get their services, um, on time to a full extent, so. Let's see, just a couple of other things to share out, um, we have several employees attending the PLC Institute in Lincolnshire, Illinois. Next week, it's a three-day workshop focused on learning, building a collaborative culture, and a results orientation. And, you know, that's what the teachers do when they meet on that common preparation time, you've probably heard about that, you know, they're, they've got a framework of how their meetings go. So, it's not just, let's just get together and just talk about kids or, you know, what we're doing today, there's a, there's a formal program, PLC is a professional learning community, um, so they're going to learn and, you know, um, better their understanding of how that is supposed to work, so. It's really important work that supports standards-based learning as well. We can't do standards-based learning without teachers working as teams, it just, it just won't go well, so. And I know some of the staff are excited because there are big names in education, the rock stars in education are going to be the keynote, keynote speakers, so, those of us who idolize education professionals are.
Mike, I just have a question about that, when those select teachers have their meeting, do they come back and share what they've learned at those meetings?
Yes. Yep, that'll be the expectation.
Okay.
Yep. And then want to tell you guys, next Wednesday and Thursday, I'll be in Stevens Point for the first, WASTA First Year Superintendent's Academy, um, I think I might have emailed you about this, but, but I, um, committed to that, it's year-long credential development for, for new superintendents, so, I'm really excited about that. And then the last thing that I wanted to share, I know that the board is interested in receiving more data reports, uh, so I'm currently working on breaking down our grade distributions for all of our courses last year, and here's, here's just some interesting things that I wanted to share with you. So, uh, looking at our letter grades last year, and this excludes transfer credits and Apex credits, so really classes that are taught by our teachers. Thirty-nine percent of all of our letter grades were in the A range last year and thirty-one percent were in the B range, so seventy percent of all the grades that kids received were As or Bs, so, so that's really good, kids are doing well in their classes in general. Nineteen percent were in the C range, nine percent were in the D range, and two percent of the grades were Fs. I don't have broken down by grade level or course or anything like that yet, but that's something that I intend to look at, to see what areas kids are doing well and in what areas do they need more support. Girls are outperforming boys, I don't, I don't think that's a surprise to the girls in the room at all, but, girls, girls accounted for fifty-eight percent of those As and, uh, boys forty-two percent. Girls accounted for forty-nine percent of the Bs, boys fifty-one percent. Girls accounted for forty-one percent of the Cs and boys fifty-nine percent. Girls accounted for thirty-three percent of the Bs, the boys sixty-six percent. And, uh, girls accounted for thirty-four percent of the Fs and boys sixty-six percent, so, you know, what the data is telling us is, you know, we've got some really high-achieving girls, they're, they're, um, getting a lot of As and Bs. And, and on the other end of the spectrum, the boys are the ones who are tending to perform poorly, you know, they're more likely to have D or, or N. I don't have any, um, thoughts, you know, on that, that's just what the data is at this point, so we'll be having conversations as an admin team about that, you know, what can we do about it, so, wanted to share that. That's everything I have.
Thank you. And when did you start?
Feels like I've been here for a long time now.
That's awesome, thank you.
Technically, two and a half, three and a half weeks ago.
Oh, that was great, thank you.
All right, um, so on the reports or on the, uh, board docs, under personnel and policy committees is where the attachments are listed for, that we're going to talk about. Down further in the first reading, so there's actually no updates on the personnel policy committees. The finance committee didn't meet, the board development and relations committee did not meet, the community outreach committee did not meet, and the family and plenary committee did not meet.
I just want to point out for the people that are at home listening, um, those committees didn't meet because we have transitioned to the working session model and, and we discussed those topics as, as a whole board. Our next meeting will be August fifteenth, uh, we need to keep the committees in place, should we need to further the, you know, the discussion with a, with a small group to gather more information or, um, propose recommendations, things like that, so. I don't, I don't want everybody to think, hey, we're just taking summer off with those things, the work is being done in the working session.
Okay, uh, public comments, is there any public comments? All right, items for discussion and possible action, academic standards?
So, uh, the academic standards, uh, are in the agenda today, it, it's required by Wisconsin state law that we publish these every year for families, so, um, there's no changes to the list of organizations that we get our standards from, from last year. It's the same, it's the same set of, um, organizations, there could be changes to those standards and, you know, those organizations make those changes as they go. There's one that I'll talk about in, in a minute, um, you know, regarding, um, what's taught in social studies, but, um, it, it's really just something up for approval by the board and then we'll post it on our website, we have to communicate with our community.
I move to approve your academic standards, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, uh, of approving the student academic standards as presented?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passed. Uh, appointment of hearing officer?
So, this is another one that's done annually for the beginning of every school year, um, this is just, just saying that the board is authorizing the appointment, should we need one for a grievance situation, um, or for a student expulsion hearing, it's not saying you have to, you know, contract a hearing officer, it's just basically saying we have the ability to do that. There are no pending, there are no pending issues where we need to hire somebody right away.
I'll second.
All right, um, any further discussion? Okay, uh, all those in favor of approving the appointment of a hearing officer as presented? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Vape detector proposal?
So, after our working session and, and interest from the board to pursue this further, I, I directed Mr. Bender and Mr. Kaiser to develop a proposal to bring back to you what you have in your packet, uh, and I just want to say, I think that, um, they did an outstanding job, it's, it's very thorough. I know they put a lot of time into that, I appreciate it, when we make decisions that, you know, cost a lot of money, we want to make sure that we've considered all angles, so, I appreciate the work on that. Uh, so based on the school perception survey responses and staff and board member feedback, I wanted to give you guys the information to decide if you want to commit, uh, to a more aggressive vaping deterrent system, um, to hopefully keep our kids not using vaping products. I don't have a recommendation one way or the other, um, it's, it's important for me to just give you that information that you need to make the informed decision, so, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bender.
All right, um, we discussed this a little bit in the working session, a little bit more at length, so I created a spark notes version that I'm just going to kind of whip through and you guys have the executive summary, so all this highlights some points. Uh, the rationale for researching vape sensors and increasing camera security was based on the school perception survey and feedback that students, families, and staff have been stating that vaping is an issue and it needs to be addressed. The objective is we researched the different companies that made vape sensors and talked with representatives to find out the implementation and cost. We also wanted to research surrounding schools and see if other schools installed the sensors. What we found was that Dalvin Darian, Jefferson, and Clinton were schools that installed and have used the sensors and their feedback was that it was successful in, in deterring students from vaping. The company that these schools use is Halo Smart Sensors. The IT report, Nick has provided an extensive amount of information in the executive summary, some key information is that we would need twenty-eight sensors throughout the building. There will be a considerable amount of work to be done to install these sensors and cameras, and Nick has provided the budget and costs in the project. The executive summary also contains detailed maps about where the new cameras would be needed and where we would simply be replacing the old cameras with updated ones. The executive summary also details the budget to accurately reflect and plan for the fiscal implications for the next six years, the cost would be roughly a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. This includes reoccurring costs, warranty costs, and future costs that need to be planned for, so if you look in the executive summary, there's some, uh, budget charts in there, and, um, that a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars is strictly for the Halo sensors themselves, uh, it's not necessarily for, uh, the extra. It's not necessarily for the extra cameras. If you continue to scroll, you'll see some of the camera budget details in there as well. Nick?
I'm here for you.
He's got my back on this. Me and him have seen each other a lot in the last two or three weeks. So he put together a really, really detailed IT report that you can see in your, in your executive summary. So thank you. If there's any questions or comments that you guys have, we're here for you. So have at it.
What was, so as I, as I was reading over this, the one-seventy, was that, that's every, that's basically everything?
No, so the one-seventy that you're going to see that is on page, that is not numbered. Page above the vape sensor install, this page here, is that correct? You're seeing where it says a hundred and seventy at the top. So in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, all of our network switching needs to be replaced. This is the last year of our current implementation. It's ten years old. We have partial coverage on our switches. So when, if they decide to die in the middle of the school year, then we're just going to kind of limp through the remaining portion of the year. So they're no longer allowing us to do next day replacement. There's no more firmware upgrades, none of that. So next year, we budgeted in to replace all of our network switching. That cost is outlined down here where it says network switching, E-rate pricing, fifty percent. So as we talked earlier, that was probably last month, maybe two months ago, and we brought the new firewall as well as our wireless access points. We can apply funding from the federal government that gives us a discount on internal network connections. This would also apply for that. However, this next, this current funding year, that window is already closed. So we can no longer apply for funding that is happening. We're too late for that. We are planning to do that next year. So that project is going to cost roughly, assuming prices don't change, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to do the entire building. We are choosing to purchase less switching next year than we previously purchased ten years ago purely because things have changed. We are no longer utilizing large labs such as these two off the library for thirty-plus desktop machines. All the students have Chromebooks. So we leverage those dollars into different areas of the educational process. But we still need to add additional switching next year to kind of get us through all of the additional network requirements of vape detectors in restrooms as well as additional cameras that we would need to cover restrooms. Somewhere else in this dissertation, we talked a little bit about, some of the restrooms do not have adequate video surveillance.
When, when the cameras were put in, you can see that it was strictly for hallway vision. It wasn't for kids vaping in bathrooms because that never really was, that wasn't happening back in twenty-eight years.
Smoking in bathrooms when there's no external windows in restrooms never happened. And if it did, it was so few and far between that it wasn't an issue.
So we need a camera more by the entrance of the bathroom rather than all the way down the hall? Because then that'll be, it's really difficult to avoid people.
Sticking with this, this first page here on the vape sensor install, we're looking at about eighty-two thousand dollars worth of year one, current funding year expenditures. And then I kind of pushed this out across six years just so that we looked at the next five-year recurring on the management council for them. It's getting to the point, as we've kind of seen over the years, that technology is such a consumable that it's almost inoperable without licensure and these contracts. It's no longer a one-time capital purchase and we can use it indefinitely. So I just kind of threw that out there as, as we know, if we purchase this, we have to find a spot for this money to come from. As it stands now, none of this is currently in, in any plan that we're currently looking at. So just so that we're aware that what the total cost across, once it hits that, that year six, we have to kind of reback, re-up on that additional licensure for those, those sensors. So any questions on just like the vape sensing implementation?
Does it sense just smoke in general or is it just vape smoke?
It'll do vape, it'll do smoke, it'll do carbon monoxide. It does, it has gunshot detection. It has, these things are, they're wild. It's the only one on the market that does both nicotine and THC. If that's meaningful, I don't know if the citation changes whether or not it's either or. That is definitely outside my wheelhouse. It does air quality, you know, this, these are sensors that you put in hospitals or some sort of, you know, chemical factory where you'd want to monitor what the air quality is for people. It does that as well as what these, these do as well for, for the education market. It has emergency word detection, so we could, you know, we could program them to respond to a student or somebody yelling help, things of that nature. So there's, there's other additional features that these offer besides the just vape detection. At this point, nobody's really implemented that, especially the, the emergency words purely because the majority of the other schools also have hand dryers in their restrooms. It's based off of kind of like a noise decibel level to trigger that alert, so.
Yeah, you don't think, you don't think of any of this and all of a sudden.
Yeah, so the other thing that's in there, you know, there's also an additional like five thousand dollars that, for calibration, that everybody had said, you have to spend the money on it because you'll be spent, you'll be chasing false positives nonstop. And even, you know, the company.
And deodorant.
Yeah, deodorants and, and they find ways around. I mean, it's not a foolproof system by, by any means. Everybody's kind of said there are, there's ways, even the company themselves, like there's only so much we can do to kind of, you know, give, give you the best opportunity to catch them, so. Any other questions on just kind of the, just the vape sensor portion of it?
Would you recommend the additional camera locations regardless of the Halo system being implemented? Now that you reviewed where they've been.
Okay, so that would be phase three, so.
Yes. Like, let's say, for whatever reason, we didn't move forward with it, which I do want to. Would you still recommend additional?
Well, at some point in time, we would need to review kind of what our surveillance system looks like. As, as we noted, two of our previous APs had looked at our system ten years ago and said, well, there's all these problems. Okay, you guys are involved with all the behavior problems, all the discipline. You tell us where you need surveillance coverage. So they designed it. What we were doing and what problems we had ten years ago is not what we're dealing with now. So if, in terms of design, it's probably a little antiquated. There's a lot of hallways that are, that are utilized by students now more than ever.
Stairwells.
Stairwells.
Those are the big ones and that's pretty common knowledge at this point.
Right.
So we would definitely want those cameras in the stairwells for sure. There's other locations.
So over the years, I've learned, the moment you start pulling wiring, labor costs, buying additional boxes of wire for, you know, somebody to pull, I mean, it's a cost, but the labor cost is usually high. So if we're having somebody pull five wires out of the data closet or six, seven, whatever it might be, to another location, you can see further down this list, the initial, fifty-four runs is about thirty thousand dollars, but an additional twenty-four for those camera locations cuts it down to eight because they're already in those closets, they're already pulling these wires. So tapping on additional labor and some additional wire might be beneficial long-term. So I'm always trying to look to ways to leverage some, some savings long-term if this is something that we desire to do.
And I don't know if this was your phase three.
This would be.
The, the cameras that they have now are much better. I mean, they, as you could guess, I mean, they have like full, you know, hundred-and-eighty degrees vision where the ones we have right now are just kind of focused on one spot. And then if you zoom in, it gets real pixelated. So these are.
Yeah, so. Internally, we have three, three megapixel cameras. Externally, we have five megapixel cameras because of the distance need into the parking lots. There's a lot of these new cameras that we'd be putting in, eight megapixel internally into large spaces such as the Commons and places where we're going to need some high detail. Other places in stairwells, we've got some really tight, old, turn-of-the-century stairwells. You probably noticed them with the old brown tile. Those are really tight and you need a really specific camera in order to catch both students coming up and down those stairwells. So we looked into that. We utilized the, the same vendor we've used for this current, our current server and MVR setup. They did not install the cameras. That company no longer exists and this is kind of the vendor that we've used over the last couple of years to kind of assist us with some of the issues we've had, both in the PAW, the addition of that secondary fitness center we had upstairs. We needed some surveillance up there when we were utilizing that as, as that fitness center needed coverage in case of any accidents or injuries. So it's a lot. One also, another thing to note in the beginning, we, the high school office, when the building was designed, there's no expansion into wiring there. It's kind of an island. So all the wiring was put underneath the Commons in pipes and we can't, we can't get any more wiring over there. So in order to do that, we are suggesting that we're going to add another wiring closet inside the high school office that allows us opportunity to put additional cameras in the office area, which is pretty normal by today's standards. And as well as the best of the.
We're checking in.
See who's coming in. We don't have anything there as, as, yeah, there's, there's definitely issues all over the place and we can address some now, we can address all of them now. It's really up to you. I am open for any questions, comments, complaints.
Well, I would like to compliment your thoroughness and I do love the exhibits and the details. So very impressed. Thank you for your efforts, both of your efforts.
Thanks.
Are there any grants or like public coalitions that you can maybe apply for to get some?
I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of anybody that's, that has done any of that. We could start digging into that.
I'm not aware, I know that Burlington was looking into it. A lot of the other schools in the conference, that's kind of where the conversation died because if people were looking for going, uh, grants and then the grants weren't coming through. So then it was kind of like, then they were out.
What about?
At least Burlington was.
For the cameras, like as far as like security aspect, is there anything like that?
I can look into that.
Because obviously stairwells and everything else, not just for the kids, but for security and safety for the building.
Sure, and the best of the world for sure.
You know?
At least offset a portion of it?
Exactly.
Yep.
Exactly. Because those cameras will do double duty then.
Well, or you could even apply for the grant, assuming that you were running all that without getting the benefit of the vape system. So the cost would be higher if you did it independently.
Yeah, I, I do know that schools have used, you could call, a lot of this qualifies for Esr money, but we utilize that in other locations. I know that that's where some of these schools utilize their money in the, in the past is for these situations. But I don't believe that we are in the locations that do utilize any of those funds anymore. But I could be entirely mistaken, so.
I don't know, we still have our Esr meeting in Toby with that? Is that something totally separate? We've already?
I'm working on that.
Okay.
I'm not familiar myself.
Right.
Yeah, I did get an extension, a technical extension. And I really don't know much about that yet.
Yeah.
So, so let's talk dollars. What? What's your projected total for twenty-two, twenty-three and on down the line?
Sure.
That's about eighty-one thousand, I think.
So eighty-one thousand dollars for this, that's.
That is for the sensors.
Yeah, eighty, eighty-two gets you sensors, install, licensure. We can absorb the wiring currently because we have enough network jacks for this year. Next year, that changes. But for this year, yes, we're, we're eighty-two thousand dollars to put in sensors in the restrooms. That's all the wiring, those are additional wiring in case we want to add more. As, as at some point in time, we pointed out that these are good for a twelve-by-twelve-by-twelve cube essentially. Anything outside of that is usually not going to be caught.
And just to explain that, that if, if you're familiar with the Commons bathrooms, they're pretty long. So I think we put in there for three.
Yeah, purchasing three.
Three in the guys, three in the girls, but we might need five. You know, if we find out that, you know, that three is not enough, but then it's going to be wired for.
Yeah, it's already wired, so you're already dragging wire in there.
So we need to add.
Right, it's no longer going to be a huge expense of pulling more wire. The wire's there, ready to go. We purchase another sensor, buy a license, drill a hole, plug it in. So that, that's eighty-two. On top of that, on the page afterwards where it says vape camera installs, about thirteen thousand dollars worth of cameras to purchase to replace new cameras in locations. There are some, like one of them is in the Commons, a perfect example. You can't see.
It's right above the PAW. Yeah, it's right above the PAW.
One needs to be new and shoot across, one needs to be replaced. And then there's licensure that goes with it. So I figured this might be a time that we'd want to talk about long-term licensing of what our current system is. There's yearly licensure that we have to purchase. So I kind of spilled that out there across every year. At the moment, we add more licensure, we purchase a licensed year one, and then we have yearly support and everything's kind of behind a paywall. So we don't get any updates or patches or any feature updates for any of the software because of, we wouldn't be, if we didn't purchase that. Since we have all-access cameras, even the ones we currently have and the ones we've purchased, we could change our software vendor on the server we just put in, just install different software. One-time licensure, because we're utilizing their software on their cameras, it's a perpetual license. When we installed the Exact Vision system, this was at a point where you had to find software that was kind of agnostic to camera vendors. Because there wasn't, there were, people that made cameras also didn't make the software at the time. So you had to go and get one of, in each pool. And this, this company obviously started to make their money on new licensure updates as of this new recent one. So now we're in the, in for about twenty-five hundred dollars a year. So we could either go with a three-thousand-dollar option to install these cameras that are above there for thirteen or we change our entire software with a one-time cost of about eight thousand and then we no longer are purchasing yearly software update licensures moving forward. So we could capture some savings that, a little bit longer term. But again, I'm always trying to find a way to smooth out, you know, budgets down the road and that could be helpful. So all in right there, let's say, let's say we go with, yeah, the eighty-two and the thirteen and we want to bite the bullet on new camera software, call it eight. You're about a hundred for this year.
Yeah, because it do the three thousand or these eight thousand, right?
Right, we could, we could purchase three thousand.
Yeah.
And then next year, we then have to purchase twenty-four hundred dollars worth of, you know, software updates and subscription.
And it's like one-on-one, five-hundred.
Yeah, so then, yeah, and then the page before the vape sensor install, Dan's pointing out that we have to purchase licensing for the, those additional switches. Those are, those are every, those are three-years subscription contracts that we would purchase. And then that twenty-thousand, five-hundred are four additional switches that would be needed for closets that we would not have enough switching capability to absorb all of these vape sensors, cameras and possibly the additional cameras that were put together in the audit to look at those areas that are of need.
So Mike, have you and your team had any opportunity to look at where a hundred and one thousand dollars might fall from the sky?
Cole?
Before you answer that though, before you answer that, and then the additional security risk camera install, that, is that, that's on top of?
Beyond, right. So I kind of took what this audit was and I looked at it as, all right, well, the immediate need or the immediate ask was vape, vaping and how do we make this more of a deterrent? So we, I kind of broke that away and said, these are the cameras we need to replace now to assist with that deterrent. But if we're already doing it, you know, do we go all in? That's up to you. We can, we can, we could, right, phase, yeah, that would be phase two, phase three of whatever this looks like. That would be an additional, wherever that is falling.
A forty-six.
Yeah, an additional forty-six.
Somewhere like fifty for the new cameras.
And then you would just go a one-time shot possibly of, of almost ten thousand dollars for those hundred-and-four cameras that we purchased. So that, if you purchase those, those licensure, that would go, that's not addition to the previous camera install of seven. That's just a total of a hundred and four compared to eighty-three. If we just go all in and we bite the bullet and move on from our current software.
So you'd only add on the difference between the nine-eight-zero and the seven-eight-nine-five or whatever for the additional cameras?
Right, so instead of buying eighty-three at ninety-five dollars, we'd be buying nine, or a hundred and four. So instead of buying eighty three at ninety five dollars, we'd be buying nine, or a hundred and four at that point. So some of those locations that we found in that audit, that's in one of these maps here in the back here we built out. I left the, the map for, from the company as well, but I kind of designed it a little bit, a little bit easier to read. Some areas, obviously we talked about areas inside of the high school office, which is now our main entry point. We no longer have multiple entry points. We kind of filter and push everybody into the doorway down there. Uh, the band and music area has had no coverage. Main hallway there, no coverage. The north hallway, no coverage. Both, both the Mackie and the fieldhouse have three megapixel cameras. Upgraded those for just a larger space to kind of see what's going on in there.
And the Mackie weight room.
And then the Mackie weight room is now?
We had to move a lot of the squat racks into the Mackie gymnasium. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but there, there isn't a camera up there. So my fear is that, you know, something happens, a weight falls on somebody, and we don't have any.
Yeah. Um, and then like the second level plan, there's, that's where all the stairwells are. So we put stairwells, the Mackies on there, additional to the fitness center.
Down here on the east end.
Yes, all of those, all the stairwells. I mean, there, there is, I believe there's one stair wall with a camera. And that was the stairwell to nowhere, the one that.
Oh, uh, by the van.
Right. That was, we had issues there ten years ago of, we had issues there.
So then the all in, if you did it all at one time, would be about a hundred and fifty.
With the cameras in the?
If I add in the cameras and add in the difference.
Viv is eighty, and then you'd add in this forty, plus the forty six, fifty, and about ten thousand. If we transitioned to a whole new, yeah.
Operating to the access.
Access camera station, right? We already have the, the server. We, we purchased that new, uh, like this might be the second year. But regardless, we, we use that, no problem for years to come again. So we don't need any additional hardware there. It's just software licensing. All right, Nicole, oh, sorry, good.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. So maybe this'll, Nicole, but is some of this in the IT budget already?
No.
Because we're, we're kind of sort of upgrading equipment.
None of this is in, none of this is in the budget. So the camera install, when we initially got this, this was also outside of the budget. There was, uh, this was part of, uh, what were we also doing at that same time? That was the, some act where we, we had, this where we put the solar panels on. We changed out all the light bulbs in the building. It was some sort of energy, energy efficiency grant that we got. And we parlayed that into all sorts of things that really weren't energy savings, but that was one of them. So they found a way to let us just kind of put that in there. So that was outside of the budget at that time. So as, as I kind of outlined in here, all this stuff are, they're consumable. So if we find a way to make it today, we also need to find a way to replace it or maintain it in years to come. Whether that means we change the IT budget to add additional funds to it, wherever that comes from.
To look into grants.
Or we stop doing other things we're doing. Because we, I mean, we can do anything we want to do. We just can't do it all. So whatever that looks like, I don't, I don't know what we could give up to stop doing in order to absorb this into it, but.
All right.
Here's the magical question.
Yes. So I have really only been able to analyze the budget at a macro level. Um, I've only met with one department head so far. So it's really difficult for me to give you a great answer on that. Because I don't know what, I can see what's on the spreadsheets, but I don't know what the detail that, what the plans in the departments are and how they're going to spend the dollars. I just know they're going to spend them on supplies or, you know. So that, that's challenging. And I actually wanted to ask these guys a question because you met very briefly and that, was that this week?
I have no idea.
It was last week. It was last week. Um, we had talked about when the system would become functional. And it certainly went to be functional beginning of the school year.
Yeah, so I didn't, Dan had asked to put timelines in there.
That's a rough timeline.
It's very rough, very rough.
It's hard to say. Everybody's like, well, we can order it. Could be in two weeks. It could be two months. It just, I, I couldn't, there's no real kind of like locked in timeline on anything. We, we just received the server for our HVAC that we purchased like three months ago, just this week. So it's hard to say what a timeline would be. I, I would almost venture, it would be nearly impossible for this to be done day one of school.
And so that's where my concern comes in then. If we're going to spend money that is budget, that hasn't been budgeted for, and, and you know, it's preliminary budget. And nobody else doesn't have a final budget. But we don't have a source to get additional funds this year. And so if we're not being able to use it this year, perhaps we look into planning it in the next year. It's just my budgetary brain, that's my lens.
So can I ask, this is my, this is a community question here for whoever is the expert on this. Is this the type of thing that you can put on a ballot for the community to, okay, like we already had that already?
Yes.
You did bring that up.
Because if that's, because if this is that important and that's a big number and it's, and that's the type of thing, and just, I surely was asking out of a curiosity standpoint so that it's not just on our shoulders to make the call on the money, if, if that's something we could put on the budget, or I'm sorry, get put on ballot for spring, that.
And having?
I'd love to hear from other people as far as what your thoughts are on that versus like making a?
I can tell you from my experience at Genoa City, we tried to pass an operational referendum only. And the community did not, they voted no, this was not this year, but the previous year. Because they couldn't understand what they were going to spend the money on. But when you list tangible items as part of your referendum even, people can wrap their minds around that. And so we did that the next year and it passed. Now, there's a billion factors that went into that, but I've heard that from other districts as well.
So are you asking it to be a referendum or were you asking it for whether they wanted or not? I wasn't sure how you were phrasing it.
So I was kind of phrasing it as far as whether they wanted or not.
That's what I thought, which is different than a referendum.
With, with the cost.
Right. Like, do you support this expenditure?
Yes.
That I don't know.
I don't know if that's a ballatable.
Usually it's a, it's a cash thing.
Yeah. So I just wanted to, the way I see it, I just wanted to share that because.
And I understand you like, this could be something for in the future, for next year. But do we need, can we get the cam, start getting cameras, cause it's just for security purposes. Now we kind of have a different issue. That's what I was going to say. I'm like scared now, like we have no security cameras in stairwells.
And we just told everybody that they aren't.
Sure.
That's a serious security issue. I mean, can we phase it like that? And then with the vaping issue, now it's kind of separate. Maybe we need to start, what are some other things we can do before we get these vape detectors? Like education of the community, like we were talking before. Start, you know, vamping it up, looking at grants, things like that. And having a focus on that. I don't even know if we have a grant committee that looks for these and writes grants or if that's the business manager's position, what, how that works. But the security isn't one issue. Yes. So how do we, what would the budget for that be? That would be?
That, that's that roughly about?
Sixty?
Yeah, you're looking at the forty six plus the ten-ish, you know, plus.
Plus you'd have to add back in some of the wiring.
Some of the wiring. I'd have to go back and change the eight thousand dollars to say, we just want to do that. The problem is, you know, if you're, again, you're, you're tearing out ceilings and you're getting in there. It's super invasive and, you know, to the building when you're doing that. So you might as well just do it all in one shot. It's so much easier to buy, you know, ten boxes of wire, throw them down there and pull ten through the ceiling instead of coming back twice and doing four or six, so.
Kelly, that's one thing.
Sure.
I don't want you to be scared. Because we might not have a camera in the vest would be old. But as soon as you walk in, there is a camera that's pointed there.
Right.
And, you know, in the stairwell, you can see the kids that go into the stairwell and out. They're not necessarily, they're not going to be watched twenty-four, seven in every spot.
Right.
You know? We are safe here. Okay, yeah, don't be scared.
And like I said, I'm, I'm more worried about people from the outside and not the kids in the stairwell. That's what concerns me. Um, and we don't have eyes on them.
Well, remember, well, the doorway is only, the only one that they can get in. All the other exterior doors are locked. Does that prevent people like that? I think the Texas thing had to have someone open or prop the door open.
Well, I, you know.
You know, you could have, you could have the locks, you could have the cameras that, you know, that Evolvi camera. The, the cameras that they had were unbelievable, you know, but I don't know.
Remember, this is kind of going into a different direction. Sorry about that. Any issue we have.
Right.
This is, I mean, sure, there might be an aspect of proactiveness in terms of a deterrent, like, oh, there it is. It could be watching me, but it's really more of a reaction.
A lot of it's more of an investigative afterwards. Like, oh, some, something happened in that stairwell at that point, and then we're able to figure it out from there. It doesn't necessarily deter, you know, prefer necessarily doing that.
I just, I, I think as far as priority goes, that should be our first priority. Vaping, that can come second. Security should be number one.
Okay.
You know, as far as budgetary concerns.
Well, just looking ahead, you know, there is a possibility that we'll have to go for an operational referendum in a couple of years. You know, so if this is something that we want to do, it's on our wish list, but we just really can't afford it right now. You know, perhaps two years from now, you know, if we do have to go for that operational referendum, we include this.
Yes, yeah.
I don't think I've seen a referendum from a school district recently that does not include some sort of security and safety measure. I mean, schools are, they were never designed for the current climate we're in. And we are always being reactionary every couple of years to what the new issue is. You know, geez, didn't think about that. Well, is that going to be an issue here? Sure. Right? I mean, half the building was built in the early nineteen hundreds and things changed in the last couple of years. And so it's how fast we want to change with it.
How much work would it be to flip the focus and front-end all the security upgrades and, you know, additional networking to allow for the vape system? You know, and you kind of like flip the packaging and then have that in a phase?
Add the cameras in there, but add the wires ready to go. So I would assume, I'd assume you'd just take the twenty-nine-ish and eight and, and we might go back. I'd assume it would probably be, I mean, that would probably be the number. Cause we'd wire it all right now, is what you're saying. And then we'd, we'd wire it all and then add the forty six. So add the twenty-nine to the forty-six. We wire it with the, the ten thousand dollars in software and then skip the eighty-two, but.
But would you want those other cameras from the vape camera install? Or would you not put those in if you weren't going to put the vape detectors in?
I'm assuming the reason we're talking about is that at some point, it's going to be something that we're going to do. I, I would probably just.
I mean, is it more efficient to put all the cameras in you'd want, at one, or can you phase those cameras in?
Yeah, if the wire's sitting there, it's just like up above the ceiling, and we just know where it's at. And we can come back and drop in sensors and cameras. It's a matter of just getting the wiring to there is, is, you know, the largest challenge, so.
Dan, is it important for you to know, just like heading out of the bathrooms? You know, I guess what I'm hearing is the cameras aren't in a great position for that.
They could definitely be in better positions. You know, has it, has it ruined some of my investigations? Yes. But, um, you know, I, again, what, what do you want to spend on it? I mean, uh, you know, if we get a call that, you know, that it sounds like vape in a bathroom, you know, and we see three kids come out of the bathroom, I can generally pick up where those kids are. I just have to tail it on another camera, you know, so when the kid's walking, okay, he's got a, you know, a red shirt on. So when he turns the corner, then I can see him from a different camera that.
So you can muscle your way through it.
It just adds time. That's all that does.
Okay.
So if we're talking fiscally, I mean, I've done plenty of investigations with the cameras and.
But your time is money too. So there's time savings and you're investigative. I think you probably spend quite a bit of time.
A little bit. My only kids at this point, so.
Is there a time?
When I get, when I see them, I know they're there. No, sorry, I could, yeah, I talk.
Is there a time of year that would be better to have this installed, you know, versus like summer when the students aren't here versus?
Yeah, I mean, this is a large enough project that I probably would have started planning, you know, the middle of the winter and just kind of really locking in on it and then walking away for a couple of weeks and then try to figure out what the pitfalls and what possible savings we could, you know, deal with if we're looking at this long-term. It's possible we could get the wiring done before school starts. I mean, I just have to try to pull the trigger on that. We place the order, cameras are pretty easy to, you mean, you just get a ladder up and we can put those in slowly after school, before school. If we're looking to not, it sounds like you're asking, do we not want to disrupt the, the learning?
Right. Is there a better time of year?
Yeah, I mean, anytime the students aren't in the building. But in all reality, students just left the building last week and they're going to be back in like a couple of weeks. So there's not really a time that this building really sleeps to the point that we can tear into everything, I guess. But there are breaks, there are, you know, days off and, you know, contractor wants the money. You got to do it outside hours to make that arrangement possible.
Well, I agree. I think the security upgrade is, is important. And I also agree with your point. If we're going to pull four wires, we might as well pull ten. That's going to be, why haven't you come back and do it twice? Especially if this building isn't vacant very often. So if they're going to be here disrupting anything or with construction, just get it all done.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, so at the end of July, I'm pretty sure that if I, I turn tomorrow and, and talk with them that they could get that us, get us on the books before the beginning of the year. The only downfall would be the additional fiber run that we'd need to take from one closet to the other to the high school office. That would probably be the only maybe difficult one that would need to be done maybe at a different point, but.
Well, I'd like to approach this as a shoot for settle for. I think we should shoot for the whole package because we had some unanswered questions. You know, Nicole is new as well. She hasn't really been able to comprehensively review the budget. There's possibility we could get some grants, maybe a donation from a company or a health alliance, something. I think we should pursue the full monty, so to speak. Look into some financing options or ways to, you know, get some contributions for the cost. And maybe you'll find the money tree in the budget, Nicole, and can help us with this. And if we have to, then at that point, I just don't think that we can definitively say which path we're going to go until we have more information on the possible finance part of it.
And to piggyback on that too, you've got the extension on the Esser funds. So potentially that could help out with financing. But again, I, I, I would agree with you. I think we need.
Shoot for settle for.
So.
So I think what I'm hearing is we'd like to move forward, hopefully with some new cameras and the wiring to prepare for a vape installation down the road. So would you like these guys to put together a proposal for that work? And then that'll give Nicole a chance to review the budget and we'll be able to explain how we'll pay for it. Maybe at the August meeting, if we can do it by then.
So you're, you're suggesting install all the cameras, transition licensing, pull wires for both the cameras and the detectors, but just not incur the cost of the hardware, software of the detectors at this point? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
And then prepare for maybe a twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, implementation of that and.
Yeah, I think the proposal for that and then trying to see if we can find this. Anyway, we need the punch proposal and the money tree. Lucky charms, whichever.
I don't know, I don't know if I'll be able to say definitively if we can spend Esser funds for this by August. Because our proposal that was submitted to the state was kicked back to us because we didn't solicit enough input from community groups. So I've got to figure out how to do that and, and be able to send the report back to the state before they'll be able to say, okay, we'll release the funds to you. But I just don't know when that'll happen. It'll be within the next six months, but I can't say by August thirty-first or, or even the September meeting, but I'll work on it.
I think all we can do is keep moving forward. I mean, that is what it is.
Okay. Well, we'll work on this and when it's ready, we'll bring it back to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for the detail and explanations and answer questions.
Thank you, guys.
All right. The next item is the principal and associate principals' job descriptions.
Uh, so before hiring Rob, I found out that our principal job description was last updated in twenty thirteen. So before hiring Rob, I found out that our principal job description was last updated in 2013, and I made some changes to better reflect the 2022, 23 principalship. It's changed a little bit in ten years. So when drafting this new description, I did solicit input from Rob, as he's the one doing the position. But also, he's been a school principal for several years now, so he, he's definitely equipped to say what the job entails. So that's one of the items. The other one is the associate principal of people services job description. This one is new. We've kind of changed the focus of that position. So I merged some of the qualifications and duties from the old director, HR, and pupil services position, specifically the pupil services part, with those of the associate principal, because there are job duties, you know, that are reflected in like Mr. Bender's job description, for example, when it comes to evaluation and student discipline and, and things like that, so. That's the background for those two items.
So are you looking for approval of those?
Yes, they need to be approved.
And is that something like that we could put in our shared docs, our shared drive? I think we, because we, we did review a bunch of job descriptions last year, and just so they're accessible for everybody to see or?
Is that the board, board member resources?
Yes.
Drive? Yeah, we could get that. Daniel just got access to that yesterday.
Oh.
And we've already talked a little bit about how to make that more user-friendly for the board, and we're also gonna start putting in these exhibits.
Yes.
So that you can reference them months or years from now.
Yes.
I, I spent a considerable amount of time the other day looking for something that I knew approved in the last ten months, but I didn't know when.
Yes, so just get it in.
So hopefully, you know, we'll be able to come up with a system that works for you. We might need your input as we kind of work through that. But, but yes, we can have a job description folder of what's approved.
Yes, right.
That's easy.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve these as presented.
I'll second. Can we begin this, Karen?
Any other discussion? All right, all is in favor of approving the principal and associate principal of people services job descriptions?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? All right. Guidelines for school health services and emergency care procedures?
Continuing with our monthly theme here of all the things that need to be approved in the summer. This is another one of those items. I do want to point out something in the nursing statistics, if you look at, if you look at that. I, um, just, I think it's significant in how it impacts our, our kids and also the operation of the school. Last year, students missed three thousand six hundred and ninety days for COVID-related reasons, right? And that can be, that can be they were sick, they were exposed to somebody at home with COVID, maybe they were close contact here at school, or they just self-quarantined because they started to feel sick, those sorts of things. But on average, that's twenty students a day out of the building, you know? I'm sure in January, we probably had a lot of kids out, because that's where we had the spike, where I was working. But on average, that's twenty students a day. And another way to look at it is every kid missing four days of school for COVID-related reasons, you know, so that, that's significant. These items here, they're, they're really just an annual approval thing. You guys have, those of you who have been on the board have seen this before. Our nurse, Deanna, coordinates with the county health nurse to make sure that everything in this binder is current and up to date. We brought it for you. If you're interested in looking at it, as you can see, it's, it's substantial, but it has every, everything, you know, that, that we need to follow in terms of care from nurse's office and best practice. So it is available at any time though, so if you don't have time tonight, but you're interested in some, some reading, let me know and I can get that to you. So I just recommend that you approve those guidelines.
I make a motion to approve the guidelines as presented.
I second.
Any other discussion? All right, all is in favor of approving the guidelines for school health services and emergency care procedures?
Aye.
opposed? Great, motion passed. Resolution to conduct short-term borrowing.
Okay, so this is another annual approval, and I want to be clear, I'm not looking to short-term borrow this month. I don't want anybody to be like, whoa, what happened, you know? But if it's something we need to do, you know, Nicole and I will provide you with specific information regarding the situation. This is just basically giving board approval to do this if we need to during the school year. Kind of like the first step in the process, and then, you know, the next step would be a, a specific summary of what we, how much we were borrowing, where the money would go, that sort of thing. So is there anything that you want to add to that?
Yeah, the other piece of it is, is it authorizes the district to borrow money between July first and when we approve our budget in October or November. And if we don't have this resolution on the books, then by state statute, we cannot borrow. So that's why it's really important, is it's, it's not giving mere or, um, Dr. Board authorization to go borrow. It's giving the board authorization.
I make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Any other discussion? Okay, all is in favor of approving the resolution to conduct short-term borrowing? Aye. Motion passed. Next is the resolution to change BMO Harris Bank account authorized officers.
Now, this one here, actually, the record needs to read, resolution to change BMO Harris Bank account and all other banks, because I just learned the other day, we actually work with multiple banks, not just BMO. So, so my mistake, I learned that. But really what you're doing here is you're approving to change the names or replace the names of Laurie De Moon and David Betts to Nate and Nicole. And then, and then she can do the rest, the subject.
I make a motion to accept the resolution to change BMO Harris Bank account and all other banks authorized officers.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of changing the, of the resolution to change BMO Harris Bank account authorized officers in all other banks?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? All right. Motion passed, and the first reading of policies.
Okay. So we've got quite a few here, and I'll, I'll give you the background for that. So the first three policies, policies forty-four, thirty-eight, forty-four, thirty-two, and thirty-two, thirty-two were discussed at the work session. Forty-four, thirty-eight, and forty-four, thirty-two are essentially adding eleven-month employees to the language that we had for nine, ten, and twelve-month employees. And they deal with general leave, vacation time, and holiday pay. So we did discuss those already. I did not include the one that we discussed regarding the student board members and student council, because it sounded like it's not an issue, so we'll just leave that policy the way it is. Are there any questions about those first three policies that we talked about at the work session? Okay. Then we have several policies where all we really need to do is change the district compliance officer's name. So their previous employees, Amber, for example, John Watson. They were compliance officers for nondiscrimination. Section five oh four eighty-eight prohibition against disability discrimination and so forth. So policies that applies to policies fourteen twenty-two, thirty-one twenty-two, forty-one twenty-two, sixteen twenty-three, thirty-one twenty-three, forty-one twenty-three, sixteen sixty-two, thirty-three sixty-two, forty-three sixty-two, twenty-two sixty, twenty-two sixty point zero one, twenty-two sixty-six, and fifty-five seventeen. We're just changing the names on those. Policy thirty-four eleven is reimbursement for teachers' credits. And essentially, I asked Sandy Harris about reimbursement for teachers' credits, and she told me that we changed our practice back in two thousand nineteen, and we no longer do that. Teachers do move on the salary schedule to the right, you know, when they reach those certain milestones, but they're not given money back for those credits they take. So just recommending we take that language for reimbursement out of there. And it still leaves the language about the change in horizontal movement. Sorry, I'm thinking of what that's called, basically, the new placement on the salary schedule. Any questions about that? Okay, now the remaining policies, starting with policy zero one zero zero, are referenced in your overview and comments pack. So Danielle and I met with Scott from Neola the other day to get, you know, a better understanding of board docs. And during that meeting, he noticed that there was a batch of recommended policy updates from December that we never did as a district. So we scheduled a second meeting, and Scott and I went through each of those items, and Danielle was present as well. So some of these policies are changes that we have to do because of changes in the statute, for example. Some of them, we don't have to make changes, but they're highly recommended because of situations that have happened in other places. Some, some of those policies allowed for choice in how we wanted to work them. So I made those choices, and they're reflected in the recommendations here. And it says option where there was a choice, so if you see option in brackets, it could have been something else, okay? There were a few that, that I, I included wording that I thought was important. And I'll go through each of these real quick, but I want to give you the background information for that. So that's why we have such a large batch. And normally, I would bring those to a working session first, but the timing didn't work out. And I thought, well, if I bring them to the first reading here, then we have a second reading on August thirty-first and approve these policies for the beginning of the school year. That, that was the thinking, so. We can also discuss them further in the August working session, and if we want to make any tweaks, changes, eliminate any of these, we can do that. So you're not forced to take them as is today, if that makes sense, okay? So I'm just gonna give you the Cliff Notes versions of these policies. I know you've got that documented in front of you, but, but I'll share with you specifics about those. So policy zero one zero zero, the definitions. I just updated this to include the current administration positions that we have. So I took out the director, chief academic officer, things that were in there that we don't currently have anymore. And stop me if you have questions about any of this, okay? So the next one, zero one four two point one, the electoral process, that was revised based on state statutes changes. Zero one four two point five vacancies. This provided further guidance to the board on procedures for filling a vacancy. So if one of you were to leave midterm, this provides more structure to explain what we have to do to fill that spot. Policy zero one four four point five, board member behavior and code of conduct. This was revised to specifically include that attendance at meetings is a general expectation of board members, acknowledge the doctrine of interoperability of office, and then require individual communications of board members to be distinct from board authorized messages. In other words, you know, if you're, if you're posting on your social media, kind of talking about the school, you know, you're supposed to make it clear that you're not speaking for the school. You're speaking for yourself. That's what this is talking about. And I, I think that conversation is already gonna happen. This would promote the policy on that. Policy zero one five two, officers. This just specifies the process by which the board officers are selected by a majority vote of those members that are present. So that comes around in April every year, I believe. Policy zero one six five point one, notice of meetings. I just wanted to point out with this one, we're no longer required to submit an agenda to the newspaper since we don't have a, an official newspaper based within our district boundaries. I do plan to continue to give our agendas to the Kenosha News in the spirit of transparency. I do think people probably go to their website to see, so I'd like to continue to do that. The next three policies, they're all in the same area, because one applies to administrators, one applies to support staff, and one applies to professional staff regarding the criminal history record check and self-report requirement. This basically says if an employee is arrested, indicted, convicted, pleads, or anything else in terms of a criminal, criminal matter, that they have to report it to the district within three calendar days. The next one, physical examination, again, there's three there, because there's separate policies for those three groups, administrators, professional staff, and support staff. This is just saying that a physical is required upon employment unless there is a case of a religious exemption. But all candidates still must show that they're free of tuberculosis before they can start here. They cannot religiously exempt out of the tuberculosis piece to it. Policy twenty-two ten, curriculum development. This states that we're now required by law to instruct on the Holocaust and other genocides in at least one required course. And we do that in one of our social studies courses. Melissa, or Melinda emailed me, but I, I forget which one, but we're doing it. We're in compliance. Policy twenty-two sixty-six, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. The only change to this one is in regards to if we were to have a Title IX complaint against a board member, how that's handled, so.
I noticed this one, it says John Watson on there. I don't know if that was the list of your numbers, but that's, I noticed that.
Um, it, it could be, it could be there as well.
It was twenty-two sixty-six.
It is there as well, yes. So the names will change, and the wording on what happens if there's a complaint against a board member. You'll see twenty-four fourteen in that overview and comments. That's not part of our batch. So if you're wondering why it's not on the list, it's not part of ours. The next two, drug-free workplace. This just revised the language to make it more user-friendly. But there is some new language here. It's added to clarify that a prescription is an exception only to the extent that the prescription is lawful in Wisconsin and under federal law. The one, the only one I'm aware of, but there could be more, is medical marijuana, so. Yeah, it's not. It's illegal in Wisconsin, which means people are not exempted from the policy, so that's what that's saying. Grievance, the grievance procedure has been revised for support staff and professional staff. And this is just saying that if I'm the, if I'm the grievant, I'm the one filing the grievance, then the board's legal counsel, currently, Jayna, is the one who would select a hearing officer as opposed to the board.
Well, because this is the one with the option, because this says when the grievant is the district administrator, the board president or the board's legal counsel shall be responsible for selection.
Yes.
So which one did you decide on?
The board's legal counsel.
Okay.
The next one, open enrollment fifty-one thirteen, there's two things to this. The first part gives the board the ability to expressly authorize the district administrator to approve or deny open enrollment applications on behalf of the board. So I won't have to come to you with each one. I can make those decisions. There's also two other pieces to that that are important. It will allow us to transfer a non-resident student with an IEP, a special education student, back to the home district if we don't have space in the program they need, or if we don't offer the necessary program. So they can't open enroll and then require that we provide services that we can't, if that makes sense. They do have the option of open enrolling at another place after then, if they, if they choose to do so. And then the other piece to this is we're, we'll be given the ability to transfer a habitually truant, non-resident student. Sounds like that's something that, you know, we've currently done, or we've done in the past, I should say, but it'll be in. Policy, yeah. Policy fifty-two hundred, attendance. This one, I don't know if it'll ever apply, but it could. Basically, this one is saying that if we have a private school student or a, a homeschool student, a home-based education student who attends here part-time, so maybe they take a class or two, that they can be excused to serve as an election day official. It's a reason to excuse them from attendance, so. And that aligns with the state statutes, so we're good. Policy fifty-two fifteen, missing and absent children. This is just a rewording of the policy. It defines missing and absent children, but it also explains that we can hold. We let them in the building, and then we hold them, not physically hold them, but the idea is, you know, we, we call social services and the police department, and they, you know, they come here. We don't just send them on their way and they get missed. That's what it's saying. The next one in your packet, fifty-four ten, is not part of our batch. Promotion placement interventions, not part of the batch. Policy 5461, children at risk of not graduating from high school. The way the policy was worded in the past, it made it seem like we had to have a plan for every student who was credit deficient. Now, I think it's a good idea, right? We should be doing that. But that wasn't the intent of the policy. So it clarifies the language that we have to have a general plan in place in terms of like what programs, services, strategies we have for credit deficient students. And then we work with those kids and families from there.
And is that something that says develop a plan in describing how the board would be? Like all of those things, you know, as a board member, I'm like, I don't know if we're doing that. Because, you know, like, how do we make sure that that is happening? You know, what's our system of that? Like, so like when we have presentations or something like, information like this would be great, you know? So we know that we're following our policies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know where we currently are with that.
We have a beautiful pyramid of interventions that we created last summer. I believe I presented it earlier because we were really proud of it, Natalia Bernizzi and I. That's essentially the plan. You know, the different tiers that you go through. And then, you know, the third intervention would be the Willmont Academy. These are the at-risk students that have credit deficiencies and things like that, so. It's a nice graphic organizer of all the different interventions that we have, but that's something that I could provide. Yep, no problem.
Policy 5722, school funds, publications, and productions. That's not part of our batch. It appears in the review, but it's not part of it. 6108, authorization to make electronic fund transfers. This just includes a new type of payment called ECH. I don't know if it's a new type, but it wasn't listed as an option for EFT, and now we're including it in the policy. Policy 6114, cost principles, spending federal funds. This policy has been revised because of the addition of all of the Esser funds that have come through in the last couple of years to clarify what districts have to do to make sure they're in compliance, so. There's language added to it, basically. Policy 6146, post issuance taxes and bond compliance. This has been revised to meet federal law with regards to the issuance of taxes and obligations or obligations eligible for tax credits. And that's a recommendation based on changes in the law. 6152, student fees, fines, and charges. This policy is revised. All it does is it includes a reference to DPI's website for the categories. So if a family were to go to board docs, policy book, they can click on the link and it'll take them right to the information they need. It didn't have that before. 6152.01, waiver of school fees or fines. This one clarifies language in regards to waiver of fees for free and reduced lunch qualifiers. Because over the last, I don't know how it's been here, but in Illinois, it was free lunch for everybody.
Yeah, we didn't hear about it here, though. Because, well, in other schools, because we used the tater or whatever.
Tater.
Yeah, it didn't work. So, yeah, we were on that program.
Okay, okay. We still have free and reduced, students who are on free and reduced lunch.
Right, but not everybody got it free.
So this clarifies that, you know, how they can get those fees waived. And then I added two layers here, which are the two that you can see in D and E that I think are just important to have there. Policy 7100, facilities planning. These changes have to do with enrollment counts in preparation for facilities construction. I don't think we're going to have to worry about that for years. Hopefully, we stop the declining enrollment and start the upswing again, but down the road if we need to look at in addition. Policy 8310, public records. This one says that the district administrators authorized to develop administrative guidelines to go along with policy, which we have in our district. And then the last one, policy 8450, control of casual contact or causal contact communicable diseases. This designates who may send a student home in suspicion of a communicable disease. And it designates the nurse or an administrator. And the macro definitions, administrators are the people that become, have in those roles. So that would be the principal, associate principals, and business manager and athletic director. So nobody else can send a kid home in suspicion of a communicable disease. Teacher says, hey, you look like you have COVID. Go call your mom. We can't do that. It also adds protocols on what the staff members are supposed to do in those situations. And that's based on, you know, pandemic circumstances and times of need and align with health departments. Those are all the policies. I know it's a lot, but I felt like those are all things that, you know, were pretty straightforward, which is why I felt comfortable bringing them to you as a community. Any questions?
I have a question about the administrative guidelines. So are those going to be updated that go, that coordinate with this or correspond with these policies?
Yeah, so that's something, that's something I'll have to look at down the road, yeah. And those won't require board approval. Those are, those are just things that further flesh out what we do to make sure we're following the policy.
And I think it's great that you're working with Scott Brown and Neola because that was a service that, you know, that wasn't being utilized. So I think it's a great resource. Because I know as a policy committee last summer, we went through them with him and it helped out a lot. Having explanations of why it was done, so, thank you. So we're caught up now.
We're caught up, yeah. And he told me they will send out batches periodically. I don't remember how often it is. Maybe you've seen that before.
Yeah, we only had that, like, I think it was July each year.
Twice a year.
Yeah.
So it's here.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so there'll be more in December, probably. Yeah, and, you know, we are paying for Neola. So I think we do want to at least take their recommendations into consideration. We're not obligated to do things, you know, but they have lawyers and they look at these things and they review court cases and changes in the law, you know? So I think in a lot of situations, their recommendations are going to make sense for us, you know? But, but not always, you know? So we do retain the right to write our policy as we feel we should for our community, you know? So I guess, you know, I'm looking maybe for some guidance on how do we want to approach that? I'll certainly bring the policy changes to the working session from now on, whenever possible. But, you know, does the board, do you guys tend to want to kind of lean toward Neola's recommendations? Do you, do you want me to?
I think when there's an option too, maybe it's something that we can discuss in the board in the working section, you know? Because there were some options. I know there was one that we were talking about, about discussions in the classroom, what teachers can discuss. And that's been a hot topic. And we kind of tabled that, and that was something we wanted feedback with the teachers. I can't remember what policy number that was, you know? But something like that should be on one person's shoulders, I don't think. I think that's why we're here as a board. So like, when we have major hot button issues, I think.
Sure.
Yeah.
It'll be easy for me to tell.
Yeah, it's like, Sam, you'll get the feel, yeah.
Okay. So I have a more overview question on it. When we attended the onboarding for WASB, they offer policy language and they actually discourage the use of Neola for their policy, for using Neola's policy language because it's too generic and recommend the use of the WASB policy. So it sounds like they also have policy language in each of these categories. And I am ignorant enough to not know why the choice was made to use Neola versus WASB and the benefits back and forth. So I have no problem with any of the recommendations, but I guess I would like to be educated, whether it's myself or you reaching out to those two resources and get a better understanding of why or what the difference is in those. Because WASB did strongly say, we don't, we don't want you to use this, we would recommend this. And we're a member of WASB as well. So I was just a little confused on the two differing opinions.
I don't know. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
It's my understanding that Neola's been used back in the Dan Cop days. But I don't know if that's an additional cost, you know, like for Neola.
Yeah, we do, we, I don't know what it does, but.
Most districts use it.
I was saying, yeah, most districts.
It sounds like, oh, that's not necessarily the case anymore, that there might be more of a shift to a lot of districts using the WASB policy.
Is this like the, I mean, is this like the superintendent search or just about anything elsewhere? Either WASB has a product, then.
They're competitors, yeah.
Yeah, but at the same time, to your point about this.
We haven't revisited that question, to my understanding, in quite a while. So maybe our product and cost of product isn't the right choice at this time. And I don't, I honestly don't have that answer.
I would definitely be interested in hearing or just getting, at least getting a different perspective so that we kind of have the ability to look at both sides, you know, plus, minus, what's the trend locally?
So, so a couple of things. Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we met with Scott, I think he told me that there's over 200 districts in Wisconsin that use their services. And they're, they're in seven states and they're adding an eighth, you know? So they may be more general because, you know, they're, they're trying to provide a product that works in a lot of places. What I can do, if we already have a subscription for WASB and we already have a subscription for Neola, is when these updates come up, we can reference both, you know? And we can, and we can look and see, you know, how do they compare? If they're similar, you know, that's easy. If they're different, you know, then the question is, well, why? And, you know, maybe we consult with our legal counsel or just make the decision as a, as a group on.
Do we draw anything else from Neola other than just policy information?
I don't know.
Because otherwise, if we pay for WASB's membership and then we're paying separately, WASB does policy, and then we're paying for a separate, that's kind of a duplication of services.
But it's an additional cost, I wonder, because like, I'm trying to follow your services from WASB.
Well, if you go into it, they can tailor a policy which is an additional cost, but I don't know if their general support is a policy, is an additional cost or just if they, if you ask them, hey, review everything, you know what I mean? And it wasn't clear. Because I did look into that ahead of the meeting and it sounded like if you wanted them to do a bunch of work for you, it was an additional cost.
So I think bottom line, a general understanding of what you get. What are we paying for, yes? What are we already paying for from WASB is, are the?
Are the extra costs for Neola necessary? Are we getting a credit product because we're paying for Neola? I just don't, you know?
Just under, the general understanding, I think, is, would definitely be.
I'll, I'll look into that.
And I won't hinder, I mean, I want to hinder the movement of these. It's just a separate, parallel path, I guess.
I'll look into that when I have the information. I'll put it in my.
Thank you.
Update to you guys, yeah. Okay.
So do we need to actually make a motion on the first reading or it's just the first reading?
So I'm going to bring the same list back to you guys for a second reading in August. And at that point, you'll go on.
Do you want to have a line item in the working session in case, because there is a lot to go through? Anybody came up with something that they wanted to point out?
Yep.
It won't have to be lengthy if there's nothing, but I'd like the opportunity to banter because there's 82 pages to go through.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, on that note.
It costs $13,500 for a three-year period from WASB, so it's $45,000 a year. How do you assess policies? To further policy resource. So it is a, you have to pay additional fee. I don't know how much it is for Neola.
All right, so on that note, can, we need to convene into closed session to take action if appropriate concerning, considering individual staff member compensation and staff member plea. Take a roll call vote, right?
There's another one in there too, disciplinary action on the staff members in there as well.
Oh, okay, I apologize. Yes, and for the disciplinary action of a staff member. So we need to adjourn and then roll call vote into closed session, correct?
No, you just, someone needs to make a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
And then you need to do a roll call vote.
All right. So, Colborne, yes? Aye. Zaworski?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Ganson?
Aye.
Tezoni?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Joy?
Aye.
All right. So let's take a quick break and then we can continue the session.
Can I have contracts for Nate Kelly and? Yes.
This is the same one?
Yes. Oh, is that this?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I'm just wondering who needs to sign it. It says signatures.
Yes, but they also need to sign on the front.
They do? Oh, okay. So you gave them a copy?
Yes. Mikey, you need to sign this one? I used to, in my previous, I always bring the documents.
Jacob, you need to turn off the mics on.
We both brought it. And I'm actually.
And the camera, so pause the camera.
That has to be signed and that's to change the signatures on the side word.
No.
Oh, okay. If I can't get it to, then you can always sign it. It's not kind sensitive, but. It's okay, don't worry. Oh, Janine, I'm about to stay for the discussion.
No.
Yes, I?
I think so.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'll be right back, I'm going to see if you get this. It's top secret. We're good.
I'm going to have to answer that tonight.
We're going to start it here. Oh, I don't, you said you wanted to.
Oh, sorry, I was passing over.
It's okay. I'm going to make sure when it doesn't, you can do it later. Were you going to get a drink? Go, go, go. This is Janine, right? Yes.
Yes.
Well, good to go.
Okay, we're back in open session and I'll make a motion to approve as presented in closed session, item B1. Can I get a second? Okay, any other, any further discussion? All right, so all is in favor of approving as presented in closed session, item B1. All right, motion passed. Can I get a, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All right. All right, it is eight forty-two. All right, thank you. Before you guys leave, real quick, I just found out this morning I am traveling for work on the working session. So, I plan on calling in as long as I'm not like traveling, traveling. So, this is, and then I'll send an email about Pantherfest, is that right? Is that what it's called, Panther Expo or Pantherfest?
I think they're two different things.
One of them's the twenty-fourth. Okay, so I'll send an email to all of you if anybody wants to, I think it's six to eight, is that sound right?
Yes.
I'll send the email so if any of you guys want to come out and do like, we did send you.
What's the twenty-fourth?
The Wednesday.
Okay. And then I'm gonna reach out to Ms. Hammersmith at Paw Printz and get a sign that says school.
With their heads on it, that would be awesome.
With what?
Or heads on it.
No.
We can just get big heads made like the one that was in the wall fender.
So, so my one question with that is I believe you, if I'm calling in, I believe you need to be the, I was gonna look into that a little more, but I believe you need to be the presiding.
Presiding.
Is that right?
I think so.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure, so, um, but yeah, I just literally kind of like.
Will you still be available to meet the Miami agenda?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Alex, yes ma'am?
Have a good night everybody.